Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Tuesday, January 19th, 2020. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames? Here.
Copeland?
Here.
Feldman? Here. Flaherty?
Here.
Flower?
Here.
Houseman? Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Inwansy?
Here. Councilor Rand, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry. Sorry, my microphone.
We're, um...
You brought...
We don't have our flag bearer here this evening. Councilor Houseman. He will not be joining us today. Um, script for the remotely conducted city council meeting, Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Um, confirming member access as a preliminary matter. This is Paul Guansy, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the city of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via Beverly's... BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. We have a, uh, public hearing for national grid. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me, the chair, to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Lills and Regulations of the Beverly City Council. Rule 22, "All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed in subcommittee, actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand, and signed by a majority of the council of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any matter may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible, after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by majority vote order any matter pending before subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or be forthwith returned to the full council." So everybody knows if you're here for the first time, that rather than do committee work, we will vote everything out on the floor as long as a majority of the council will agree to that. So I will ask Ms. Kent to call the roll.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Meeting ground rules for public hearings. I'll introduce each figure on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute/unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please observe the chat function for technical difficulties and strictly the city council for public comment. If you want to speak at a public, uh, hearing, type your name and you'll be recognized. Um, and I'm, I have a note here for Ms. Kent. Please remind, if the councils would like to type, if councils would like to speak, to type "me" in the chat function, and you will call on them in order, as opposed to raising your hand. That's what we've gotten used to. Uh, so we're all good. Any questions or comments before we start tonight's festivities? So we'll go right to Susan Higgins, who is the Chair of the City's Waste Reduction Committee. Susan, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay?
All good.
Great. Okay, I'm gonna take a moment to, uh, share my screen, so just bear with me while I do that. Okay, and are you seeing my slideshow?
All good.
Great. I can't see anybody, so I won't see if hands are raised or there's any questions. Um, thank you very much again for inviting us to present the Waste Reduction Committee's, uh, recommended best practices for the city of Beverly. I will try to move through this as quickly as possible, um, and would suggest that, uh, we hold questions till the end, if that is okay with you. The Waste Reduction Committee is one of a many, uh, multi-member bodies in the city of Beverly. We are a nine-member committee, although we currently have two vacancies, uh, two open seats. Um, our role is to act in an advisory capacity to both the mayor and city council, as well as to, um, other city departments and the general public on issues related to solid waste management. Our specific responsibilities include, but are not limited to, identifying ways to increase recycling and reduce waste in the city, to assist the city in establishing policies that aim to achieve that waste reduction, and to serve as a resource for public education efforts. This is a snapshot of Beverly's waste stream in 2020. Uh, we generated more than 12,600 tons of waste that went to disposal. Uh, we recycled approximately 2,900 tons of waste. And on top of that, we recycled an additional 102 tons of textiles, and we diverted to composting 348 tons. If we take a look at those numbers in the big picture, uh, you'll see that our waste tonnage that we disposed, 12,612 tons in 2020, is actually higher than we've seen in the past six years. This may be an unusual effect due to COVID. More people are working from home, studying from home, taking classes from home. And so we are seeing a shift in what would normally be waste generated in the workplace to being waste generated at home. However, we do want to keep an eye on that, and we want to find ways to get that number down. A discouraging trend that we see here is a decrease in the quantity of materials that we're recycling. We have seen a continued trend downwards to only 2,900 tons recycled in 2020. So that is a basis of why we are providing several of these recommendations to find ways to improve on this performance. As we work to develop our recommendations and as we talk through them with you tonight, there are numerous policy and program changes, um, that the city has undertaken, some great accomplishments that we've achieved that are worth noting. One of the earliest ones in this time period we're talking about goes back to April of 2011, when we implemented carry-in, carry-out at Lynch Park, and that proved to be a very successful program. In 2015, we initiated a two-year pilot curbside composting program that had approximately 340 participants in it. It was very popular and very successful. Uh, throughout the two-year period, we had a waitlist of residents who wanted to join. And so in 2017, we were able to expand that curbside composting program to citywide participation. A very significant step that the city took was in May of 2018, when we implemented a two-barrel trash limit with overflow bags. Prior to that, as many of you will remember, we allowed residents to throw away as many as five barrels of trash, which is pretty much unheard of. Um, and so this was a step that moves us closer to something we'll talk about later tonight, which is pay-as-you-throw. Also that year, we adopted a bring-your-own-bag ordinance, which was a step towards, um, preventing the use, the, the distribution of single-use plastic bags at the point of checkout, and educating and trying to change that behavior of getting people to bring their own bag. After that, we began to look at polystyrene in ways we might handle that. In November of 2019, the Waste Reduction Committee sponsored a styrofoam collection event, uh, which was paid for generously in full by the Beverly Rotary Club, and that allowed us to offer that event at no cost to residents. In the following spring, on a citywide level, work was initiated on a potential polystyrene ordinance, and there was a, great work was undertaking on that, and then COVID hit, and it was tabled as many things were. So as we move forward, we hope that things will settle down, we'll begin to get back to normal operations, and we will be able to reinvigorate those efforts on a potential polystyrene ordinance for the city of Beverly. Also looking ahead, the existing contract with JRM is set to expire at the end of June 2021. With that expiration, it opens the door for changes, and it's the right time now to have these discussions and talk about what do we want our waste management program in Beverly to look like. Also, we should be mindful that the state has a pending ban on the disposal of mattresses and textiles that we anticipate we'll see enacted in October of 2021. That is part of the state's, uh, waste disposal ban and part of their, um, solid waste master plan, and that will require some action on the city to, uh, address that change. So, in the end, with those in mind, the Waste Reduction Committee developed 13 recommended best practices. And I do just want to take a moment at this point to say that these practices were developed in consideration of work that's ongoing at the state level. The state, as part of its, uh, 2030 solid waste master plan, is really taking a broad vision to look at moving the state towards a zero-waste policy. And they're, they're looking at doing that through measured steps, uh, with the focus on reduction and recycling and composting, um, through policies and through actions. And, and we as a city really do need to step up and see what our part is in getting there also. Um, the goals are to achieve a 30% waste reduction by 2030 and a 90% waste reduction by 2050. So I am gonna move forward in the presentation. I will hit on some of these practices as individual discussion items, and then others I've, uh, grouped together, uh, because they kind of go together, and we can talk, uh, talk about them as, uh, in combination. So as we look at recommendations and goals, really, the important thing to do is to remember that reduction always has to come first. And I think most of us are familiar with the universal recycling logo of the chasing green arrows and the three Rs of reduce, reuse, and recycle. But really, a lot comes before recycle, and that's the reduction piece of it. And there are many R-words out there. Reduce, reuse, refuse, rethink. I'm sure all of you can come up with your own R-words. But really, again, the idea is always prioritize and focus on reduction. We can get there through ordinances, such as the bring-your-own-bag ordinances. We can get there through initiatives, and an example of that might be the Library of Things that was instituted at the Beverly Public Library, which allows people to, uh, borrow items they may use only on occasion, rather than purchasing them and having them sit around the house or be discarded, and stepping up outreach and education to focus on reduction and help our residents know how to get there. One of the biggest changes we are recommending is that the city commit to a pay-as-you-throw program. Uh, pay-as-you-throw also goes by another acronym called SMART, or S-M-A-R-T, which stands for Save Money and Reduce Trash. Under a pay-as-you-throw or SMART program, residents pay a per-unit fee, usually by sticker or bag, for waste they throw away, and this can be implemented in combination with a flat fee. A MassDEP also recognizes a hybrid pay-as-you-throw program, and that's where community would have carts or barrels, and residents would be limited to one barrel, not to exceed 35 gallons, with any excess waste going in overflow bags. Beverly's program is not a hybrid pay-as-you-throw because we allow two barrels. So in order to get to pay-as-you-throw, we need to take one more step to go down to one barrel or change it to a sticker or bag program. A MassDEP has shown through data that pay-as-you-throw is the single most effective mechanism to reduce waste disposal tonnages. And the communities in the state that have stepped up and done this have seen reduction on the order of 35 to 50% in the quantity of trash that they dispose. There are also more than 150 municipalities in Massachusetts that currently have pay-as-you-throw programs. There are examples all across the state, and I've just listed a few here that are kind of local to us. Um, Gloucester perhaps being one of the best examples of a community that was perhaps similar in nature to Beverly. And it is worth pointing out that pay-as-you-throw is not just applicable or successful in rural or small communities. Uh, Worcester, for example, has had a program in place, I believe, since 1993, and uses the bag program. Uh, and so it goes to show that even at a large level, pay-as-you-throw can be a successful way to manage waste. Moving to pay-as-you-throw would certainly require an analysis of our current financial model. Right now, trash is paid for through the trash fee and on a tax basis, and this model would look to try to replace, in part or whole, the trash fee with the per-unit fees charged on stickers or bags. And it's also important to recognize that moving to recommendations as we're making, including this pay-as-you-throw recommendation, increases the potential of grant funding that the city can receive. Um, we have been fortunate, um, to receive MassDEP Recycling Dividends Program, or RDP, grant funding for the past couple of years. And this step of committing to pay-as-you-throw in the past year had the potential to increase our grant funding by $6,000. The next significant step we're making, uh, recommendation we're making is to take the step to increase access to food waste composting. This table gives an overview of what we've achieved since we initiated the pilot program in 2015. Um, and as I mentioned, we had about 340 participants during that two-year pilot program. In 2017, when we moved to a citywide, uh, program, opening it to anyone who wanted to participate, we saw the numbers grow quickly, and they have steadily continued to rise. At the end of 2020, we had 1,277 paid and active subscribers in the city of Beverly, and in 2020, we were able to divert 348 tons of food waste from disposal, which saved the city what would have been a cost of almost $24,000 in a tipping fee. An important thing to recognize is that, uh, Beverly serves 12,625 households uh, through the waste and recycling program. So at a level of 1,277 subscribers, we're really only at about a 10% participation rate for curbside composting. And based on MassDEP data, it is estimated that more than 2,500 tons of food waste still remains in our trash. And with all that food waste diverted, we could save more than $170,000 in avoided tipping fees. So we have room to grow. We have a lot of room to grow in our food waste composting program, and this is something we, uh, strongly recommend the city, uh, find a way to continue to grow and thrive. Uh, ways that we can increase access to food waste composting include simple steps, such as supporting and educating residents that may choose to do home composting in their backyard. Uh, for residents who, for whatever reason, are unable to subscribe to or use curbside composting at their residence, we can consider opportunity to provide access to drop-off composting locations. And certainly, we should, uh, have a discussion of how we can expand the program, either to a fully sponsored city program or through stronger steps that the city can take to promote and facilitate the private subscription program that we currently have. Moving from composting onto our next recommendation is that the city further evaluate public space waste management practices. Uh, back in 2011, as I showed on an earlier slide, the city implemented carry-in, carry-out at Lynch Park, uh, and it's been very successful. And through our discussions, uh, we have learned that the state has, although not by policy, in practice, implemented carry-in, carry-out at parks across the state. Uh, with some exception, those exceptions being at some of their busier parks in the summer months, they do place trash barrels at those locations. Uh, carry-in, carry-out is, in general, supported by the Waste Reduction Committee. Uh, we do think that as we move in this direction, if this is the direction we go in, there needs to be strong public outreach and education, so that people know why we're doing this, how we're doing it, and, um, there's transparency in all aspects of program implementation. At one of our recent Waste Reduction Committee meetings, uh, we had a, a very, um, detailed and serious discussion about circumstances in which carry-in, carry-out may not work. And so part of our recommendation is that the city consider these unique circumstances, and when appropriate, make accommodations. Um, one of these issues is the homeless community. Uh, here in Beverly, we have many, uh, private citizens and, um, nonprofit volunteer organizations that really have stepped up in on a day-to-day basis, are working to feed hungry people in our community and feed the homeless community. And for a long time, they have done that very successfully through, uh, a program where the people would come in and they would be fed in a very sustainable way with reusable plates and, uh, very, very little waste generated. Because of COVID, operations have shifted significantly, and many of those, uh, places that are feeding this community are doing it in a to-go basis. And so that is causing a unique and immediate need to address waste that is out there in our community that has no place to go. Uh, we also hear regularly from citizens about problems with dog waste along, you know, popular walkways and, and pathways. And there are circumstances, um, where to-go containers are generated from restaurants, or maybe more specifically from food trucks or ice cream, ice cream trucks, for instance, uh, where people were not, were not in a situation perhaps to take that with them when they go. So, while we support as a committee carry-in, carry-out, and we think it can be very effective in our community, our recommendation is to evaluate it more thoroughly, accommodate needs where they need to be accommodated, and ensure in whatever we do that we're not simply shifting the responsibility to volunteers to be out there and clean up trash. If carry-in, carry-out isn't working, then, uh, we need to reevaluate and reassess and make sure we don't just simply shift that responsibility. Um, grouping some recommendations together, there are many things we can do to improve recycling on a citywide basis. One of the most important is to implement clear and consistent recycling practices. For a long time, Beverly has been a dual-stream community. We are required under our contract to separate paper from other containers and put them out separately. The problem is, recycling facilities in our state, including JRM's recycling facility, are really designed to handle single-stream materials. So they collect our materials, we set them out as dual-stream, and in doing so, it is cleaner because we take the time at home to separate it. However, JRM collects it and mixes it together in the truck. When they get it to their facility, they have the capability to then separate that material. But this causes a lot of confusion, um, and, you know, problems in the community where people don't understand what our program is. And this perhaps may be one of the reasons we're seeing those recycling numbers go down. People are getting frustrated and fed up and are giving up, and that's not what we want to happen. Uh, we also would like to implement practices that enforce recycling on a citywide basis. Um, the city does not serve all households or all businesses, uh, with waste and recycling. And many of those private condominiums or apartment buildings or commercial establishments that turn to private haulers have trash services only. They are in fact required under law to recycle materials that are banned, and Beverly can try to enforce that by implementing private hauler regulations, which would require these haulers to provide both recycling and waste services anytime they serve any establishment in the city. We would also like to see opportunities for additional recycling. Um, Salem, the city of Salem, is a good model for where this has taken place. Uh, they offer, um, once-a-quarter electronics collection events as opposed to our once-a-year events. Uh, cities like Newburyport have what are called Charm facilities, which stand for Center for Hard-to-Cycle Materials. Um, these are opportunities that could be monthly or every other month, and allow people a place to bring their recycling, that, and waste disposal items that normally can't go in the trash. Uh, this is a step that, uh, may help to alleviate illegal dumping that we have seen across the city in some locations, such as at the textile recycling bins. And we also would like the city to endorse and require sustainable waste management for events. Now, I know right now with COVID, we're not seeing many events out there, but when we get back to, um, Main Streets having block parties and, um, homecoming events and other things that take place throughout the city, we would like to see these event sponsors step up and factor in recycling and composting as appropriate as they plan and execute their events. Another grouping of recommendations all fall under, um, providing dedicated city staff. Now, while I say that, I will recognize that there are many in the city that work hard, uh, day in and day out on waste management efforts. What we feel is that as we undertake more and more programs to, uh, go down that path to zero waste, along with the direction the state is going, it will require more and more time and effort on behalf of the city. Um, this could be hiring new staff, or it could be perhaps just reshifting responsibilities uh, based on what internal staff we already have. The kinds of activities that dedicated city staff, uh, should be doing to help move us along is enforcing provisions in the contract. So now where we have a two-barrel limit, making sure only two barrels are picked up. Uh, doing more direct outreach and education to the community and working to make a more vibrant outreach and education program. Ensuring that the city leads by example, finding opportunities to make sure we have recycling and composting in all city buildings, and that city staff are, are leading by example for our residents. And then serving to collaborate more directly with the Waste Reduction Committee to ensure that we can be, um, spending our time wisely and in a way that's meaningful and most helpful to the city. Um, this I will not spend a lot of time on. Um, there's so much information we're presenting tonight, and cost and pricing information is a whole nother level and really requires input from the city. But I did just want to put something in here to, uh, put some numbers in front of you. Uh, we spend about $1.8 million a year on an annual fee for JRM, and on top of that, we pay $69 per ton for each ton of trash that we dispose, which amounts to more than $800,000 per year in additional costs. The city earns revenue from the trash fee, which is $100 for residential units and $300 for commercial units served by the city, and for the purchase of overflow bags is another source of revenue. Um, I mentioned earlier, we've been fortunate to receive grant funding from MassDEP. In the most recent year, this was $33,000. And as we undertake these different initiatives, we have the opportunity to increase that amount of grant funding. The pricing that individual residents who subscribe to the Black Earth Composting Program pay in Beverly are $6.99 per month or $79... pay in Beverly are $6.99 per month or $79.99 per year. And the city continues to subsidize that by giving a $20 rebate on the trash fee and provide a free curbside and countertop bin for new subscribers. And a very important point is the textile recycling program through the schools. This has been very successful. In 2020, we diverted 102 tons of textiles from disposal, and that effort alone earned the schools more than $10,000 in rebates, and it saved the city approximately $7,000 in avoided tipping fees. So with that, I come back to just the general list of recommended best practices, and I will actually stop sharing my screen so I can see everybody and would be happy to elaborate on anything or answer any questions that anybody has.
All right, Susan, we have to have a quick public hearing that I didn't want to interrupt you. It was scheduled for 7:15, so why don't we take care of that and we'll go back for questions if that's okay with you?
That would be fine, yes.
Okay. So Ms. Kent, let's go to our public hearing scheduled for 7:15/7:35, order number 290. Ms. Kent, could you please read that?
The order that the city of Beverly, a public hearing on a Tuesday, January 19th at 7:15, you know, on Google Meet, live stream and vote chain relative to the petition, for National Grid, Plan Number 29496588, PL3 in East Corning Street. And this is in the paper on January 8th.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And Michael Byrne from National Grid is here. Mr. Byrne, what would you like to do?
The reason for this petition is the house at 14 East Corning Street has never had a dedicated National Grid electric service. Their electric services currently feed off of a branch circuit from the panel at the Church in the Cove Building. They desire to separate the house from the church, so our petition is to install 55 feet of conduit in East Corning Street in order to provide a National Grid electric service to that house.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Any questions from members of the City Council? And are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this public Thank you, Mr. Byrne. This work has not been completed yet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's an inside joke.
Yes, it is.
All right, so I will close our public hearing, and then I will ask Ms. Kent to take a roll call vote to approve. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. We'll see you again soon. And now we're back with a few questions from the Waste Reduction Committee, and we have councils that would like to ask you a question in big capital letters, Council Rotundo wrote me.
That was not on purpose, that just was my cap lock on.
You wanted to go first.
Yes, of course, I was very anxious. Thank you for recognizing that, Mr. President. Ms. Higgins, thank you so much for all the information you provided, and commend you for the work that you continually do. People speak very highly of your work that you've done for the city. A couple of, well, really one big question for me, and I know it's become more prevalent since the COVID pandemic occurred and then all the trash barrels were being removed from the parks. And I know, you know, the carry and carry out works well for Lynch Park. I know there was a lot of education done, I know Julie, I can't hear feedback, excuse me, I know there was a lot of education and outreach done with that project. But one of the things that I got a lot of complaints were some of the smaller parks, especially where the playgrounds were being used by the younger kids. I can attest myself, a couple of the parks in my ward were getting overran with trash, the fact that I was actually physically picking up the trash myself on a daily basis, which goes to the volunteer part. The neighbors at Livingstone were doing the same thing. We were putting our own trash bags out to get them out and get, you know, get the trash up. You know, unfortunately, when you have a bunch of teenage boys or even some young adults playing basketball pickup games, they're leaving their, you know, sports bottles and their water bottles there, and they're not considered of taking out their, you know, sports, their trash. You know, even at my own house, to get my 13-year-old and his friends to put trash in six trash barrels or whatever that's hanging around the yard is a challenge. So, you know, I just want to just double-check that, is the policy still to just go on a case-to-case basis? Like I said, there are certain parks that would definitely be beneficial with the carry and carry out, Independence Park, some of the parks where people do leisurely sit down. But these parks that really have young adults that are playing and the ball fields are on the basketball court, which would really still need some trash barrels put there. And I know that it's been conversations going, but I think we've rarely recognized it more since the pandemics occurred and that the parks reopened up with the kids playing.
So I cannot answer the question on what the policy is for the city. It is our understanding that the city has moved towards carry and carry out, and we, like the public, are unclear if that really is just due to COVID or if it's the direction we're moving in. You're correct that Lynch Park was very successful, and one of the reasons it was successful is it's gated, it's fenced. There were park rangers there who, as people would come into the park, they could be handed a bag to put their trash in, they could be educated personally, one-on-one about the new policy. And there was a large group of volunteers that went and did the sweep through the Lynch Park area, picking up trash every day until it got established. So, you know, I can't answer what the city's policy is, that's not a question for me to answer, but I can say as a committee, we do support carry and carry out as an effective way to manage waste with consideration of site-specific, you know, considerations and with much stronger public outreach and education efforts as it's being implemented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. Councilor Ames?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Higgins. I mean, this was a phenomenal presentation. I attended one of your meetings, and this is just an amazing document. I can't disagree with much of, with really anything here, and you have taught me so much just in the time I've been on the council. I was hoping that, I was hope, well, I'd just like to say that I would be, I'm a little disappointed not to see the administration here, because I think this is a really important economic, health, environmental conversation, and this has got to tie into the work that we're doing right now with Beverly, with Salem rather, and just our goals and the contract re-up. And I just, I'm so impressed with you and your committee and would hope that the administration would take this document and your recommendations seriously. And my one ask is if you would tell us, just so that we all know, a little bit about your day job and a couple of the other members on the committee, you know, the, just to give us an idea of the professionalism you have on this committee. Thank you.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. So I am an engineer, that's my background, and I worked in consulting engineering for many, many years on solid waste and hazardous waste management, and actually spent a lot of time working on waste-to-energy facilities and representing the public entities and monitoring operations contractually and environmentally. And about two years ago, I moved into a new position, and I work at Northeastern University. I'm the Associate Director of Materials and Recycling, and I manage the university's waste and recycling and composting program. We have over 100 buildings and 60-something acres of land here in the city, and we have campuses in Burlington, Dedham, and Hunt. And I've, so I do this day in and day out. Over the summer, we rebid our waste and recycling services, and we just, over the holidays, which is a difficult time to bid work, but we rebid composting services. So it's what I do on a regular basis. As far as the committee goes, we have a broad range of people who serve, and we have some committee members who go way back to the early days and really know the history of the committee and, you know, what the committee did when it was formed as a grassroots, early days, just trying to get people to recycle at all, let alone, you know, take on all these new initiatives. And we have some new people that are, have really just kind of stepped up and really kind of believe in the sustainable waste management and trying to take the steps towards where we should be in terms of a city. So it's a great group. We do have two openings, and we are very much interested in filling those two openings. Thank you.
I'll say, Councilor Ames?
Yeah, that is wonderful, and I just have to say that it's so great to have a Ward 3 resident in charge of this, so thank you.
Good stuff, thank you. Council Feldman?
Yes, thank you, and thank you so much for this, the incredible work you've been doing, and all of this, the research and the recommendations. It's really been enlightening, and I, I'm not sure if I missed this somewhere or if I'm not fully understanding everything. I see that our JRM contract is coming up for renewal, correct? And I was wondering if there was any, if you had the information behind what financial benefit it is for the city to have the dual-stream recycling. Does that result for our, in our contract, having better tipping fees? Or I just was wondering what the financial benefit is to that, for us, for Beverly?
Yes. So the dual-stream really goes back many years. Dual-stream, not many places do it anymore. It is in fact, though, the best way to have a cleaner recycling stream. So the cleaner our recycling stream is, then the less contamination and the less fees we pay on top of that. Right now, Beverly is, has a uniquely good contract. Our contract with JRM is very beneficial to the city. The fact that we pay a level fee for that $1.8 million is for collection, for transportation, for processing recyclables, for operating the Stanley Street composting facility. And then on top of that, we pay the tipping fee for only trash. And the tipping fee we pay, which is currently $69 a ton, actually is on the lower end of the range of what we see out there municipally, and it's definitely low on a commercial and industry side. So as we look at what we'll do when the contract is up, we can renegotiate with JRM, we can put it out to bid, but whatever we do, we can expect that we will see increases in cost. What we have is unusual. Many places are paying tipping fees to process recyclables, which we're not paying. Many places are paying fees for contamination, which we're not paying. So as we, if we move to single-stream and we see increased contamination and we have a new contractual structure that charges us for that contamination, we could be hit. So there's, there's many factors to consider out there as we decide how to move forward, and there really is not a simple answer in terms of what direction to go. So back to the original question, dual-stream in the end does keep contamination low and does have the potential to have a lower cost for the city. The problem that the residents have is when they take the time to separate it and then JRM mixes it all in the truck, people get confused, they get frustrated, they give up on the program. Did I answer you?
Yes, no, that was great, and I have heard that. I understand that it does get a better quality end product when you have the single, the dual-stream until pickup. So I have, I have crossed that bridge in answering that question, that part of the question before, so I wanted to tag a financial benefit to that response, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Feldman, Council Flowers?
Thank you, President Guanci. If it's, if it's okay, I have just several questions for Ms. Higgins, if that's okay. Thank you. And Ms. Higgins, I want to say thank you, I'll echo my fellow counselors, thanks to you and your committee for the good work that you have been doing for our community. And when you were presenting that timeline, I felt a little twinge, I'm sure you all do too, seeing the polystyrene ordinance that was, that was getting teed up and then COVID came, thinking about the conversations we were having. So like you and your committee, I'm eager for us to get back to that as soon as we can. I wanted to ask, you had mentioned Salem is a good example for some of the kinds of best practices that you were helping to outline for us, and I just wanted to check my own understanding, maybe you could say a little bit more about it. Am I correct in thinking, I know you mentioned the importance of having city staff who are in some way dedicated to help as we move more fully into, living into these best practices with education and oversight and enforcement? Am I correct in thinking that Salem is an example of a community that has someone in that enforcement role that you were talking about that helps to make sure that their waste stream is being handled appropriately? Is that, is that accurate?
To my knowledge, that is accurate. They are available for the education, the outreach, the enforcement, and for implementation of programs like electronics collection, the book swaps, the repair clinics, and styrofoam collection, when they are able to do those kind of events.
Thank you. I noticed one of your points that you didn't stress as heavily, but I noticed you had put on one of your slides to make sure that as we're growing into these programs, that all of the burden doesn't fall to volunteers. And so I was thinking about communities that have already worked some of this in, in a systemic way. So thank you for helping me check my own understanding. I also was just thinking about the food waste. I noticed, you know, you mentioned 2,500 tons of food waste remained in our trash, and I was thinking about the many reasons why that's problematic, right, in terms of just food going to waste, we know that there's food insecurity, but also that food in our landfills creates methane gas very quickly as well. So I was thinking it's the financial piece, but also as we're moving towards becoming an ever more sustainable and green community, thinking together, and back to your point about education, about what it is, what happens when we put food in landfills environmentally. And I was curious, I often have folks ask me when they're talking about whether or not they should sign up for the composting program, which we do in my family, and it's wonderful. I feel like it has diverted a lot of waste from our, our personal waste stream, so I can't recommend it enough, people are not doing it. But people sometimes will say, I have a garbage disposal, though, I don't really need composting. And I was just wondering if you could comment at all about what happens, is there, is there a benefit to composting over using a garbage disposal, or what happens to that waste when it goes into the drain, if you have any insight?
So there's different schools of thought on that, and there are a lot of people who say that the composting, land-based composting of the food waste is the pure way to do it. It returns the nutrients to the soil, you know, and it's your, it's your closed-loop cycle of growing the food, eating the food, composting the food, returning the compost to the earth. When you put your food waste down the garbage disposal, it goes to wastewater treatment plant, and in many cases, you know, the wastewater treatment plants have the ability to digest, anaerobic digestion of the sewage sludge that remains. And there are, you know, very successful facilities out there right here, including in Massachusetts of co-digestion, where the food waste can be slurried, mixed with the sewage sludge, and digested to generate energy. That is not a bad way to go, but if you are one of the people who believe in the purity of the food process, then, then it's not quite as good. You take something that was so clean and, you know, natural, and now you're mixing it with wastewater sludge. Now you're not going to be putting that on your garden to grow more food. You may still beneficially be able to use it to reclaim land or for, you know, non-food applications, but it's not quite the highest use of it. At least that's the opinion of many people, including myself. I have to say, I do like the generation of the energy, but I like to see that clean, so separated food waste go to its, what I would say, a higher and better use.
Thank you. And if, if I may just ask one last question, and then I'll, I'll be done. I was just thinking about your point about public education, and then you're looking at your numbers on how recycling has declined, and I was wondering if you have any thoughts about ways that we could do better education to around, not just the dual-stream, but I wondered if people were also becoming frustrated or giving up on some of our programs with confusion around which plastics are recyclable or not. I feel like, you know, and coupled with that, just the news that had come out about recycling markets, and so I wondered... And so I wondered, I guess I've been sitting here wondering if there's ways that people suddenly weren't putting as much in because it felt like, well, it's not going to get recycled anyway, or I don't know which plastics can go. And so suddenly more plastics are in our trash waste stream. But I wonder if you think that that could also be one of these benefits of more more education that we could do to really help people really firmly understand which plastics and the benefits that still exist to recycling?
Absolutely. And as a matter of fact, prior to developing these best practices in our conversation with Counselor Ames, we initially were talking about best practices for residents, what to do with that bottle, what to do with that can of paint. And we said, you know, we really have to kind of step back and look at best practices at a higher level and then get down to that education and outreach. You are right that that there has been a lot of changes in the industry. And we're really are coming back to the basics of not worrying about if it's the number one, number two, number three plastic and really look at what the container is, if it's a container, if it's a narrow neck bottle. You know, that's what you put in your recycling bin, not a little flimsy piece of plastic that was covering batteries over a piece of cardboard. You know, it's really looking at what the facilities can take and can market at this moment. And there has been problems out there. We are, you know, working as an industry to try to overcome that and get to a better point. But I think you're right. I think people get frustrated. There's a lot of things like little items, we say that, you know, if you have a little eyedrop bottle that's plastic, that can't go in your recycling because it will just fall through the screens and end up with the trash. Black plastic doesn't get seen by the optical sorting technology. So when those, you know, to-go containers are black plastic, it doesn't get recycled. You can put it in with the recycling, but it's not going to get optically seen and sorted, and it's going to end up with the trash. So I do think that is a factor in why we're seeing some numbers come down. But also, when you look that it goes back the whole six years, it is, to me, an alarming trend to see a constant decrease in those numbers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers. Great questions. Counselor Copeland?
Ah, yes, thank you. Our council president and Mrs. Higgins, excellent presentation, great information and some things I didn't know myself. So thank you very much. And I want to say, I guess going off of what Counselor Flowers said, the outreach and education to me is is a huge piece of it that that I'd like to see grown a little bit more. I know even with my family, with, you know, we do the recycling, but it's so confusing because, you know, we thought they're no longer taking paper and you have to divide it in two. And no, you don't have to divide it in two. Now it all goes into one. So it's just, it's just been confusing. And I think that might be, and that's been over the years. So I think that might be why you might see some of that decrease as well, because it has been confusing. And I also have some questions that I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer because they're more about the financial aspect of it. I'd like to get a better idea as far as when you talk about the the pay as you throw programs. What's going to be the difference to that financially for for individuals, for households, compared to what we're currently doing? You know, as far as are they going to be expected to pay more? Is it going to come out to the same? How's that going to be different? And then you have the composting that you might be able to use to offset some of that. Or, but again, that there's a there's a price that goes along with that as well. So I like to kind of figure out the the financial aspect of it and how it works as far as saving the city, but also what it means per per individual households.
Yeah. So there's a price that goes with everything, right? It's kind of the way it is. And if you, when you want to take steps forward to do the things that are right and that are good, it almost always costs more. And the trick is finding a way to get as many of those into place as possible without, you know, breaking the bank. In terms of the pay as you throw, right now, as a resident, you are, as a homeowner, you know, or in a residence, you are allowed to put out two barrels a week. And you pay a trash fee of $100 a year. So if you put out your two barrels a week, you know, times 52 weeks, you're talking. And you can look at, as a city, what we charge for those barrels. So, you know, we could structure a program that mirrors the trash fee that we pay, but translates it to a per bag or per sticker fee and would be equal. The goal here is really to get residents to, even ahead of recycling, which is why we said we prioritize reduction, finding ways to just not generate it in the first place. Because it doesn't really benefit us to just generate it all and say, we'll just try to recycle it all. We have to try to not generate it. We have to turn things down when we can. We have to find reuse opportunities. We have to repair things and put them into, you know, secondary shops for somebody else to use and benefit from. So I guess I can't fully answer your question on finances. It does require a more detailed look at it. We could work with the city. I don't think we can come up with finances in a vacuum on our own. But I do think that there are ways to kind of balance it and try to mirror what we have now in a way that is perhaps more equitable for homeowners. You know, we view it as like your water bill. If you use more water, you pay higher water bill. If you generate more trash, you pay more on what you throw away. And I think that a program could be implemented similarly as with the trash fee, where there are opportunities for senior citizens and and people of reduced means to apply for reductions or waivers. The same could be put in place with a similar program that was pay as you throw through bags and stickers.
Thank you. And my my major concern there was I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if we ask, being asked to pay more towards that. But, you know, some people are thinking that a portion of our taxes is helping to pay some of that. You know, we don't want to have them pay more to get less.
Right. Now, composting, you brought up composting. And composting is a tricky one because right now Beverly has, through Black Earth, if you just look at Black Earth and the communities they serve and the fees they charge, we have perhaps the only community who is cheaper than us, maybe Manchester, which is host to the Black Earth facility. We pay $79.99 a year. Many communities out there pay $99.99 for six months. So we are at a very, very low pricing structure. If we were to move to a city-sponsored program whereby instead of residents paying on their own to subscribe, if the city offered this as a service, Black Earth would be, their prices would increase because of prevailing wage requirements. But at the same time, we would hope to have more participants because the program may be offered at no cost to residents, so we have greater density and that might bring it down. But that is actually something that would require either competitive bidding to get that pricing from someone like Black Earth and their competitors, or a much more detailed analysis. I don't think it's something that any of us could really come up with in a, in a, you know, accurate way.
Okay. And then my, two more things. As far as the, if we go to a pay as you throw and instead of two barrels, we go down to one barrel. And you said the one barrel would be, I think, what is it, 35?
Correct.
Gallons?
Yep.
Do we have an idea of of kind of what family size that represents?
So when we went from five barrels to two barrels, the one of the reasons we went to two barrels is because evidence was that that's what most people in Beverly were putting out. So it was easy to go to two barrels because there was not an impact on many households. Now, there were certainly people out there who were putting out more than two barrels. But, you know, I don't often see more than two barrels out there anywhere in the city. I mean, if you all think about, as you drive around the city, how often do you see more than two barrels out there? And how often do you see the overflow bags? I don't even see the overflow bags. So I think we are at the point where most people are putting out, households are putting out only the two barrels. Certainly, you're right that as your household size grows, your trash grows. My household is a family of, right now, it's either two of us or three. If my son's home from school, we don't generate a lot of trash, except for the two cats that we have. So the cat litter and when it's used, the box that it comes in, which is not recyclable because it's that coated plastic, that alone can fill up my trash barrel. So everybody has a little bit of a different circumstance in terms of what they generate. And, you know, we just, we have to be creative and we have to, again, work on the education and try to help people find ways to take the little steps that will hopefully make a difference.
Yes. Yeah, I know for for my family size, we're a little bit bigger, so we can be anywhere from five to seven people. So we've got it down to one, one big barrel.
That's good.
Not even two, but one big barrel. And sometimes that's a little overflowing. So I just wanted to get an idea, if you go down to 35, that might be tough for us. But as far as, you know, if it's, if 35 fits, say, a four-family household, you know, just so we have an idea of the impact, again, that might have on the community.
So maybe we have to sort through your barrel and see what's recyclable and then.
I I do recycle, but but the composting we don't do, so that that might help. So.
That could make a big difference, yes.
And one other thing, you talked about the the change that's going to come with the mattress and textiles. Do you know how that's going to impact us?
Yes.
Are people still going to be able to throw out the mattress and everything else or?
No. So right now, the state has certain items are considered waste ban materials, and they are the easy-to-recycle materials. So that is cardboard, paper, narrow-neck bottles, like a water bottle, tin cans, glass bottles and jars. Those items are all banned from disposal and must be recycled. So as part of the 2030 draft master plan, the state is proposing to change the waste ban list to tighten up who is required to compost. So right now, any commercial entity that generates one ton or more per week of food waste is required to compost. That's going to come down to half a ton. It's going to be cut in half. And then the materials that will be banned that are new to the list are textiles and mattresses. So we will need to find a way to recycle those. No longer will people be able to put that mattress out in front of the house and have JRM pick it up and throw it in the back of the trash truck. So we'll have to come up with something. It may be like the, like we do with electronics and TVs. Third Saturday of the month, you put it out and it's picked up for recycling. Or we have to have a drop-off location. Or we have to encourage people when they buy a new mattress to have the old one taken away and be recycled. But that is going to be, it's going to impact everybody and it will certainly impact us finding a way to do it. The textiles, we're probably in pretty good shape. And with access to the bins at the schools and with Beverly bootstraps, we can probably, through education and outreach, do a good job at handling that.
Okay, perfect. And you said that's not going to take place until 2030, is that correct? Or?
No, it's that ban is scheduled to be implemented in October of 2021, which is this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, we got to move quick on that one. All right. Now, thank you again. Wonderful job and thank you for all the the insight.
Thank you, Counsel Copeland. Counselor Rand?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Well, you can.
No. You can? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Higgins, for that amazing presentation and for continuing to hold a fire and passion for waste reduction and waste management. I I'm with you. And I I think, I want to just urge counselors, I guess I'll take this opportunity to urge counselors to just take a look at the state's waste management plan and their goals. Because the the recommendations that our race reduction committee has come up with are really in line with the state's plan. And as Mrs. Higgins and and Ms. Barrett can attest to, being in line with the state plan means we get more and better grant funding. So right now, the state is incentivizing being in line and prepared for these goals. So I I I know it was interesting to me to read that plan and just sort of reinforces the value of doing these things. I think we need to be educated really well in order to to have really hard conversations with our constituents. I reached out to Commissioner Collins just to ask him what kind of, how did removing barrels from our parks, how did that affect his department's productivity? And I I think, I mean, he shared this information with me, so I'm sharing it with you. But here's, let me just tell you one small detail that he shared with me. Not having the barrels freed up two workers for two days a week year round and up to four days a week in the summer months. So two workers, two days a week. So those highway department employees could take care of potholes, street sweeping, sidewalk repairs. And it was the first year in many that they kept a sweeper on the streets almost every day. And then the, there are about, he shared with me about four points similar to that, that all equal higher productivity and cost savings for our city. And I know it's not easy that I I get calls and lots of questions about dog waste and trash at parks. I I don't know that that problem is where I want to put our city resources year after year after year. I think with the support from the city and the Waste Reduction Committee and our own voices, we can educate the city how to be a respectful and responsible user of our public spaces. And that means we can get, you know, we we have a cost savings just from this last, this first experiment of being more carry and carry out at our parks. You know, one of the things, one of the points that Commissioner Collins made was that across the city, there was actually less litter at the parks than there usually is. So I don't know. I I want to share my passion with you. And I acknowledge that it's a hard conversation to have. But I don't know that city government is that that our job is really to clean up dog poop for $30 an hour when you could be repairing a street. Um, so I, but I would love it if you think about that and share your thoughts with me going forward. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rand. Counsel Flowers, just for a quick moment, of course it's okay.
Well, I already spoke. Well, thank you. I just wanted to mention, when we were talking about just about textiles, Counsel Copeland had some questions about the state's ban. And I just wanted to mention, for folks who are using Black Earth for curbside composting right now, that is another way that textiles can be picked up. So just where Ms. Higgins was talking about how we're we're in pretty good shape in terms of textiles and we are, you know, I tend to personally put my textiles in the bins at my son's school because I know that then that money goes to the schools. But I think another great opportunity that we have that will help us manage our textile waste is for folks who are doing curbside compost. You can put out a small bag with your compost pickup. Except on rainy days, they ask you not to do that because it will get wet and mildewed. But if it's a clear day, you can put your bag of textiles out. And and similar to the textile program at the schools, what I think is also really positive about those programs, both Black Earth and the schools, is on the idea of reduction, high-quality textiles that are picked up go to thrift shops or thrifted out. And then it's just the lowest quality that's then shredded for industrial recycling. So I think in that regard, too, if we have more people who are taking part in our curbside compost, that also gives them the opportunity to dispose of their textiles differently. So I just wanted to share that for people who might be thinking about whether it's of interest to them or maybe just didn't know their textiles could go out with their compost.
Thank you. Great point. Thank you for sharing that, Counsel Flowers. Counselor Housman? Well, Counsel Flaherty almost fell over. No, Scott's not with us tonight. Susan, great presentation, amazing information. You can tell that, I mean, it's what you do every day, but you still have a passion to carry it into your community. We really appreciate your, the time and effort you've put into educating us tonight. And as always, if there's anything else we can do to help, please reach out. And thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
On the, do you have anybody on the call that's on your committee you'd like to introduce?
Um, I do have a couple of people. I see Lisa Willworth on our committee. I see her face if she wants to behave. I'm trying to see who else is on here. I saw a few others earlier, but they may have signed off. So I apologize if I'm missing someone on our committee. I think it's just Lisa and I right now.
Great. Well, Lisa, thank you for being here also. All right, let's get back to our regular meeting. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous meetings that were held on December 21, 2020, and January 4, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Kent.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yeah. Whose sets of minutes have been approved? Communications from his honor, the mayor.
Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $66,000, $66,040 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mass DOT. This grant funding will be used for permitting for the removal and replacement of existing security fencing and capacity questions of the airport property. The match for this grant will require a transfer from the Airport Enterprise Fund balance. Please refer to the Beverly Regional Airport Transmittal Letter for reference in the amount of $23,160. This transfer request will necessitate a public hearing prior to any final action by the city council. Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. Therefore, request the city council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, January 19, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
Thank you. And we have our Grant Queen, Ms. Catherine Barrett is here, as well as Gloria Bouillon from the airport. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanci. Our airport manager Gloria is here as well. So I'll let her say a few words about this grant for the security fencing. There is a small match for it. So we do have our municipal finance director, Bryant Ailes, here as well. If there are any questions regarding the match.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Ms. Bouillon? Gloria? Well, let's go to Mr. Ailes. And Mr. Ailes can talk about the match that we have to set a public hearing for, correct, Mr. Ailes?
That is correct, Mr. President. Public hearing before we can approve a fund transfer from the Enterprise Fund balance.
And then when we do that, we will accept the grant? Or can we accept the grant tonight?
You can do either. If they've been submitted as one order, it might be procedurally easier to accept it all at once. But that's up to the clerk.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Ms. Bouillon is here.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Gloria, talk about the fence.
So this is a project for the airport. We had permitting for the perimeter fence, the security fence for the airport. So this is actually a reimbursement through Mass DOT. Every year, they put a special fund towards airport security. And so this goes, this actually coincides with our wildlife hazard management plan and also for our security plan with the airport. So this is actually permitting for the fence that we are replacing, about 5,000 linear feet of the airport fence. And that, that project has already started. As I said, again, this is just the, the actual reimbursement, since the permitting has already been done with Beverly, Danvers, and Wyndham.
Thank you, Ms. Bouillon. Does anybody have any questions for either Ms. Bouillon, Ms. Barrett, or Mr. Ailes? Okay. Hearing no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Order Number 20 for February 1 at 7:30.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Bouillon, for being here. Let's go to Order Number 21, Ms. Kent.
Order Number 21. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $15,000 grant from the Department of Fish and Game, Division of Marine Fisheries, Small Grants Program for Improvements and Repairs to the Beverly Harbor Pier. This grant funding will be used to provide needed maintenance and repairs to the Beverly Harbor Pier to ensure safe public access for recreational fishing and outdoor recreational activities. This project will continue to allow for public access to the harbor resources and improve on ADA accent point. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked gift or donation to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. Therefore, request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on January 19, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, President Guanci. Some of our councilors who have been on the council for a few years will remember that we were awarded this grant two years ago in 2018. And it's for repairs to the Beverly Pier. Because of the saltwater, the pier pretty much constantly needs repairs and upgrades, and it gets frequent use by our anglers. And so we were really excited to be awarded this grant. So hopefully, the council will accept it and approve it.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Barrett? Very impressed about you using the word anglers as opposed to fishermen or fisherwomen.
I actually, I actually wrote this grant, and I'm not a fisherwoman, and I'm not an active angler, but I'm an expert at anglers now.
I would entertain a motion to approve the grant.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Order Number 22.
Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint subject to your review and recommendation Ms. Jan Peers at Windingupton Court to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee. Her term is to be effective March 1, 2023. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Public Services. 11A.
Order Number 11A. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to provide additional information related to my request that you you approve of execution of the senior lease for one type C 71 passenger electric school bus, which was discussed at the city council meeting on Monday, January 4, 2021. Attention, please find the following documents. Diesel versus electric bus, school bus type C 71 passenger cost comparison, electric cost emissions and social cost analysts, electric school bus invitation for bid, electric school bus Highland electronic transportation response. Thank you for consideration of the electric school bus lease, and I look forward to discussing this with you at the city council meeting on Monday, February 1, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P.K. Hill, Mayor.
And we're gonna hold that order as I spoke with the mayor today, and he'd like to take this up again on February 1. We're on our next page. Order Number 12.
Order Number 12 from the city clerk. Request approval to change order numbers 284-294 to 1 through 11, because we forgot to do it for 2021.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the city clerk's request.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. 13.
Order Number 13 from the city clerk. Approval for the 2021 election schedule.
I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Kent's request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. And I just want to make note that our Assistant City Clerk, Christine Dixon, is with us tonight also. Ms. Kent?
Order Number 14. Communication from the city clerk. Renewal of delivery and taxi licenses for 2021, and all of them have flagged, Christine's flagged them to make sure that they all have what they need to be approved. And to be scored.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Kent? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve her request.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Order 15.
Order Number 15. Communication from the city clerk. We are really busy. Renewal and renewal for delivery license for the cat, I mean, for the class-two license for the Cabot Field at 429 Cabot Street. And this is separate from the ones we usually do in a group, because we're all familiar with Cabot Field.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Kent? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Second. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. 16.
Order Number 16. Communication from Councilor Hausman. Questions and comments on Plan Beverly, Comprehensive Master Plan adopted January 2021.
And Council Hausman has asked that we hold this until February 1. I let Darlene Nguyen and the mayor know that today. So I entertain a motion to receive and place on file Council Hausman's comments.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Order 17.
Order Number 17. Communication from Council Hausman for the nomination of Council Copeland's in the text.
And I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to accept the late file from our finance director, Bryant Ailes.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. And on to the order. Mr. Ailes.
Want me to read it? No?
Oh, yeah, you have to read it, right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Order Number 23. To allow the school department to use FY 2021 appropriation funds towards two prior-year invoices totaling $2,100.
Now, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you. I'll be brief. This is a, an order that you all will probably see from time to time that comes through my office. It's a request to utilize funds in the current fiscal year for some costs that were incurred in the previous fiscal year, but yet weren't invoiced. And therefore, the school department is looking to spend $2,100 for the inspection of buses that occurred back in May. This is a typical run-of-the-mill type expenditure. And I just want to reiterate, when these come before the council for your approval, by law, we're required to seek approval because it spans fiscal years. But in terms of the types of expenditures that are coming before you, they all must adhere to the existing policies that we have throughout our departments in terms of approvals. So this will also go before the school committee to make expenditure. And so the appropriateness of the expenditure is never in any question. It's really the timing of, of the work that was incurred. So I appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Any questions or comments? Mr. Ailes, real quickly, they're not asking to use city side money to pay these bills. They're paying this out of their, their appropriated budget for this year.
That is correct. It would come out of the school's budget.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Ailes' request.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers? Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order Number 18 is communications from National Grid for a petition for intersection of Church Street, Frisco, and Essex Street.
I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing for that at 7:15 on February 1.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Yes. Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes. Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matundo?
Yes.
Inwansy?
Yes. Ms. Kent?
Order Number 19 from Communications, National Grid for the petition for intersection of Brimble and Durham Road.
And I would entertain a motion to set this public hearing for at 7:20 on February 1.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames? Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes. We have unfinished business. That order number 279A is the comprehensive master plan of the city of Beverly. We're gonna hold that until February 1st. Ms. Kent, do we have things coming out of committee this evening?
We do.
So reports from committees.
Okay. Order number five, um, communication from the mayor to reappoint trustees on the Beverly Affordable Housing Trust, Richard Dinkin, Susan Gabriel, and Mayor Michael P. Cahill.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes.
Order number 11, from Finance and Property, communication from the mayor on, for the 10-year lease. Oh, we're gonna hold that, right?
We'll hold that one, correct.
Right, we're gonna ignore that one. From Legal Affairs, communication, order number two, communication from mayor for the appointment for the Design Review Board, Ms. Chelsea Zakis, and Planning Board Department Representative, and she is here with us.
Okay. Can you say, do you want to say anything before we approve you?
All right, was that addressed to me? Hi, Chelsea. Hi, nice to meet you all. I'm looking at my monitor this way, well, my camera's this way. Um, uh, I'm, I'm new to Beverly. I'm really excited to be part of the Design Review Board. Uh, just started late November with the Planning Department, and I'm excited to be here.
And because of COVID, we can't come up and see you, so.
I know.
It'll be over before you know it, hopefully. But thank you.
I hope so.
To you, uh, working on behalf of the citizens of Beverly.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So I would entertain a motion to approve that, uh, appointment.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes. Ms. Zakis, you are officially the Planning Department Representative to the Design Review Board. Thank you.
And you can, you can come to our office, um, anytime to get swan and Chelsea. Come to either Christine or I.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Kent.
Order number four, communication from Legal Affairs, reappointments for zoning board of appeals, Victoria Burke Caldwell and James Lavassa.
Questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes.
Order number three, from the Public Services, communication from the mayor, reappointments, trustee of the Beverly Public Library, Mary Merrill, Kevin O'Reilly, Margaret Altman, Myron Shearer Suter, Marshall Hanley, and Ivy Mahan.
I would entertain a motion to approve the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes.
Order number six, from the Public Services, communication, mayor, reappointment, Beverly Golf and Tennis Commission, William Loud.
Uh, motion to approve Mr. Loud's appointment?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
An enthusiastic yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes, I would entertain, I would echo Councilor Ames's, uh, words of support for Mr. Loud. He's the man. Ms. Kent?
Order number 10, from Public Services, communication from Councilor Copeland to, for the sinkholes in Beverly Farms.
Um, Councilor Copeland, you submitted this as a, uh, as a point of information for everybody, so are you okay if we receive that and place it on file?
Uh, yes, the only thing I need on it right now is I had sent over a video for, um, uh, just to be reviewed, uh, so I think once that video is, uh, reviewed, then we can move forward on it. Um, I know we're looking to, uh, have a couple other people on the, the line potentially today to go over it. Um, uh, but as, as of right now, there's nothing that we need to do, wanted to move forward. Uh, except have the video looked at, and then they, they did the, you know, take whatever actions they need to from there.
So why don't we just hold it? Can we do that, Ms. Kent?
Yes.
Keep it to committee?
Yep.
Until we get a little bit of a resolution. Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Ms. Kent?
That's all for committee.
That's all for committees. I know Councilor Ames wanted to make a comment or a statement before the end of tonight's meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say that it feels like, um, you know, I'm the kind of, I, growing up, my, um, parents would toss myself and my friends in the back of the station wagon, bouncing around in the back with about 50 pounds of political literature and go door to door, dropping it off with the hope of a Sunday, um, at Putnam Pantry afterwards, if we got it all out. And, um, the names that we'd be giving out would be Kerry, or Kennedy, or Guzzi, or King. And tomorrow is a big day, because for all of us, because for the first time, I mean, for me, decades, decades and decades of working on campaigns, we're gonna have, um, a woman vice president, and it's a big deal. And I just know, one of the people that has really informed me over the years was Fran Alexander, and she just was a leader I think all of us, men and women, could look up to, and the kind of woman you always wanted in your corner. And I know she's looking down, thinking, okay, so it's been a long time coming, and it's just a great day tomorrow, I think, for all of us, because as we've figured out here on this council, when more people from different circumstance represent us, we end up with a more representative government. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ames, and just to remember Fran Alexander, she was very instrumental in helping me in my first run for office, and after my first meeting, I had a bad habit of putting my pencil behind my ear, uh, so after my first televised meeting, she came right down my place of employment and, uh, told me to never do that again. So I've tried not to do that, and that was 20 years ago. She was an amazing woman. We're lucky, we were lucky to have.
Yep, that was pure Fran, pure Fran. So thank you for her giving me the time.
Uh, Councilor Flowers, I know you worked with Mayor Cahill on a joint statement, uh, on behalf of all your elected, all the elected officials in the city of Beverly. Would you, do you have it in front of you that you can read it, or would you like me to?
Um, thank you. I, I can have it in front of me in, in just one second. Thank you, President Guancey.
Well, I know that you worked on it, so I think that it would be, uh, better coming from you.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I, um, do want to say, I especially, you know, I reached out to the mayor and asked if he had in mind to have us do a statement together. Um, and then from there, the ball kind of started rolling, and then he was able to send something out to all of us and to our colleagues on the school committee, and I, I want to say that, um, for me, I think the most important piece and the thing I find most hopeful is that when, um, when it came out today from the mayor's office, it has all of our names, as well as our school committee colleagues and the mayor, and I feel like for our community to know that their elected leaders are releasing this all together, um, is a really important thing. So I appreciate that we had the opportunity to do this all together. So the statement that was released today on behalf of all of us, and our colleagues on the school committee, and Mayor Cahill, reads as follows. "We, community leaders of Beverly, Massachusetts, join our voices together to condemn in the strongest way possible the violent attempt to derail our country's constitutional peaceful transfer of power that all Americans witnessed unfold at the United States Capitol on January 6th, 2021. We stand together to disavow acts of violence, hate, and harm, just as we stand together in affirming our strong and shared belief in the processes of democracy and in our free and fair elections. We remain committed to our important work together for the greater good of all the people of Beverly."
Thank you, Councilor Flowers.
Thank you.
Um, and I have a note here that I almost forgot. Surprise, surprise. I have to find it. Uh, this is from our Sustainability Director, Irina Keefe. "Public information session for the city's aggregation plan called Beverly Community Electric. This info session will take place January 20th at 6:30 PM. For more information, it is on the city calendar on the city website. The plan is available for public review until February 5th." So anybody interested, get on the city website, uh, as soon as you can, and get ready for tomorrow night's, uh, info session at 6:30 PM, and there'll be a link on the city website to get there. Um, great meeting tonight. That presentation put forth by Susan Higgins, the, the chair of the Waste Reduction Committee, was one of the most impressive information sessions that I've seen in all my years. Uh, something we can all take to heart and work on. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matondo?
Yes.
Yvontie?
Yes. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody. We'll see you at our next meeting on February 1st at 7:00 PM. Good night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Yes, good night, everyone. Good night.